All right, prayer.
I have to go over the one thing. Hey, guess what? The day I had this.
Hey Heather, come here. I done screwed your thing up here in about two seconds. Order the screen again. All right, everyone ready? Good to go, uh, call and order, roll call, Michael.
Hey, we have Calvin Waters, Avery Shrum, Jeff Thompson, Tim Bates, Kenny Dyer, and Kevin Jacobs.
So you guys don't mind us start order prayer, please. Most kind and gracious heavenly master, I want to thank you for another day that you give us woke us up, give us a breath of life, Lord. Thank you for holding our families, thank you for all you do for us. All you're gonna do, Lord, just continue to look over leader Low County and the best way that you see fit. Give you all the glory and praise for all things, Lord. Lord, most of all, I want to thank you for sending all the begotten son Jesus Christ down on the cross and have everlasting eternal life, Lord. Thank you for washing us from both Christ and Jesus, no pray, amen.
The pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, justous. Uh, start out with the, uh, first agenda is resolution bid award for emergency repairs to Castle Rock Road. Uh, I've got Justin Staley here with ERCS, he's gonna open the bids.
The lump sum bids on Castle Rock Road. Most bid, BRC Trucking. Three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Second bid, Hicks Brothers Construction. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars. You guys see, trucking, and it was three twenty-two. Third bid, Bulldog Excavating. Two fifty. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the fourth bid, there's only four bids, Miller and Sons. For two eighty-five, nine hundred. Well, next up is to review the references. Can you two or discuss any of the contractors? And select a bid.
Do think that, uh, according to the engineer's report, we need to address the matter to
Yes.
Go over the engineer's report.
Yep.
I guess we're gonna get a guy from KYTC to to, uh,
We may need to get it re-scoped by another engineer, because right now the engineer report is lower than the lowest bid.
On the project scope, it's the biggest place bid, well, let me scoot on down here.
specification, road repair will follow best construction prices, all workshop firm with section seven oh one, eight ten of the Kentucky Department of Highways. For and after photos. Install a hundred and twenty foot of seventy-two inch CMP, provided on site. Each inlet and outlet end should contain a KYTC standard head wall. Install rip wrap around head walls. Approximately forty tons of rip wrap. Approximately fourteen thousand five hundred cubic yards of fill material will be needed to maintain a slope of no greater one to one. Install a hundred and twenty foot of eighteen feet of that hundred and twenty foot of eighteen foot wide asphalt and shoulder the roadway. Seed and should be maintained, the slope stability, mobilization of equipment to and from job site. You guys got any questions on that project? Or any recommendations of those four contractors that you hear? Uh, can I, some of your guys' input on that?
Who was actually the second contract bidder? I didn't get that name, I didn't. After BRC.
Uh, Bulldog Excavating.
No, I mean, it comes after BRC.
Hicks Brothers Construction.
Okay. Thank you.
And then there were Bulldog and then Miller and Sons.
Right, I got those, thank you.
You know, it's, it's a pretty crucial project, I know we've got a temporary crossing in for them, I don't, I know Avery saw it, I don't know if a few other guys saw it, but it's a, it's a pretty, pretty nasty project. Got about eight households up in there that are, uh, having to travel a, a temporary road that's starting to cause issues as it gets close to winter time. But, uh, just, uh, kinda just, like I said, just wants me input from you guys.
Well, whoever, uh, gets the award of this contract and so forth, they've got a deadline to get started and a deadline to finish.
Well, once it's, uh, once it is started, Justin, uh, I mean, it could be started immediately upon award. We'll get a, another KYTC engineer's opinion on these bids. And, uh,
And then we can set a deadline in the contract once it's selected. I mean, you're too low for Hicks and Bulldog, I mean, it's a pretty significant jump from those two to the next two.
Two forty Bulldog is two fifty. Miller is two eighty-five and BRC is three twenty-two. Kinda what's your thoughts, Calvin?
Who can start on it, um, the soonest? And who could complete it the soonest?
Yeah.
With the spec of the project.
What about you Kenny?
Yeah, I believe him.
You could actually call him if you want to.
We'll call afterwards and talk to them. But have you guys got any questions or anything kinda guidance from you guys that you, uh, feel that, uh, of these? All four of the, uh, bidders are pretty, uh, experienced and qualified bidders, in my opinion. Uh, yeah, obviously, we were looking at going with the low bid, but, uh, uh, what is all right with you guys, or what do you, is all right?
Yeah, that's good.
What about you Avery?
Well, I'm fine with that, you know, uh, like I said, all these guys do a pretty good work and so forth and have for some time. I think, you know, in the process, uh, we probably should go with a low bidder if they can get it done in the, you know, in the amount of time that it takes to get it done, and they've got a lot to do.
What about you Calvin?
Just whoever can do it the, do it to the scope of the project and whoever can do it the soonest.
Yeah, okay.
Main thing is the scope of the project and are there anyone to be able to go out like in phases or the, is it broke down into phases of the project?
Uh, no, but we do have monitors that is checking on these guys to verify their, uh, their, the work, and that's on each, on every contractor each day. Where they're supposed to be monitored and checking these, each contractor three times daily right now.
Do we get any updates from the monitors or anything, or? Any updates, or?
Justin, can you guys like provide those for us?
Okay.
But, uh, what do you guys wanna do a motion on, on anything?
I make a motion on whoever can start on the, the soonest.
I'll say the bet.
All in favor?
Ah.
Do we need to specific, specify one, or?
Uh, yeah, it'd probably be best to, we can't, we can try to call them right now if you want to, we can be two minute calls and
We'll, we'll specify one, but we'll do you, uh, say you guys recommend we go with the low bid? And we will, uh,
Yes.
We will, uh, contact them after the meeting and, uh, if low bid can't start immediately, we'll go to the next. In order. All right.
Sounds good.
Get a motion. And see, uh, how soon he can start.
That makes sense.
All in favor?
Ah.
Both? Eyes at it.
If low bidder can't start, then we go to the next.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Been working for bankment, uh, repair, RFB. Justin has that.
Alright, so the embankment rip wrap repairs for we're getting into that period of, where last meeting we talked about, we need to end the hourly construction work. FEMA, there, there needs to be a clean break of when that emergent repairs stop and your normal repairs start. So the emergency exit period, it's kind of ending, those school buses are back on the road. Um, and the way procurement needs to be done now is competitive, open procurement. And that basically for FEMA means it has to be line item prices or lump sum prices and it has to be competitively bid and then lowest bids identified.
We, we had bids too from, uh, Marquell Enterprise, Blue Rock Construction, BNC Septic, H and H Trucking, Bulldog Excavating, Blair Contracted, ZNS Contracted, Michael Houston Contracted, Wall Management, Miller and Sons, Brett's Truck Repair, Thomas Bates, Herb's Contracted, Hicks Brothers, Small Town. We had several, several two bid on that in a range from fifteen bids. And, uh, we had a range anyways between sixty dollars to two thirty-five, two forty.
Provision installation of rip wrap. So that's, they had to purchase the rip wrap, haul it to the site and install it. Lowest bid was sixty, highest bid was two forty.
What, I'm gonna say too, just my opinion, and this is just, just me talking. Uh, this low bid with the price of rock and fuel. Uh, I'm not sure that, that is I'm not sure how many of these guys that we'll actually get to work for that because that is pretty, that's pretty low cost, I'm not sure if they, uh, I'm not gonna say they didn't understand the, the way that the bid was laid out, but that, that is a, it's a very low cost because it goes from sixty up to what's the next low? One, it goes from sixty up to one eighty. And, uh, uh, you know, we'll kinda go off your guys', uh, guidance on that as well, uh, want everybody in, in, in in agreeance on things, but it did go from sixty to one eighty and then like from one eighty up to two forty, uh, there are several bidders that could have been, uh, off ten dollars, five, ten dollars per ton difference.
The one thing keep in mind with that also, if you look at a KYTC standard price sheet of the last year for installation of rip wrap, it is, it's right at around sixty-four dollars. But that's taken into account multiple locations and locations of quarries, if I know here, gotta haul it further. So it is probably a little low that bid, but I would also say that one eighty is three times that KYTC standard, so it really should be somewhere in between. Uh, just from my experience in dealing with FEMA contracts. So, I have a, we'll get through the rest of this though, and I'll show you some, uh, sites I've worked up based on these costs and we don't think it's fair when we worked it up, then we made it to rebid. Or go up to that next price, but the problem is if we jump all the way up to this next price, I, I don't think FEMA is gonna accept it with cost reasonable. But I'll finish this and then I'll show you guys a little workup I did. So installation of rock provided by the county, so that first one was if they had to purchase their own rock, second one is if they pick it up strip mine or from the county garage. Lowest bid is forty dollars a ton, highest bid was one ninety. Installation of geotextile fabric, the lowest bid was ten dollars per square yard. The highest bid was thirty. Um, most contracts I've seen, that's anywhere between two to four dollars, so that lowest bit of ten right there, they're gonna be making up a lot of their, I mean, money, I guess, if they're losing money on the rip wrap, and I'll show you how that works with this example I got.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is the, uh, the geotech, the, I mean, the geo grid or whatever there, is it have to be placed in like certain levels? Meaning that you apply so much rock or is it just at the end of the, uh, of the, uh, of the field?
It should be under the rock, it doesn't have to be multiple levels as far as I know, and we can get them more specifications though.
Some of the retaining walls, you know, you, you go so many feet, then you lay that matting down and then you come on up in order to help tie it together. Uh, but, but far as the rates, now this is just, this is me, I feel like that we need to set one rate and every contractor that wants to work for that rate, then that's what we're gonna work.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's what we will do, just try to, uh, to, uh, get a rate established here and, uh, we definitely wanna go off the KYTC and, uh,
A quick example for that fabric, there's a, there's a damage on Watts Fork, it's a hundred and forty-five feet long by three feet wide by three feet deep. So that road just, the bankment broke off right there at the edge of the road. Uh, the estimated fabric they would need is a hundred and ninety-three square yards, so about two hundred. Just for that one site, so it's now that's a significant amount of fabric they're putting down there, as long as they put it down and it's not expensive.
Which makes it not damn heavy.
Yeah, they just need to, they need to tie it in together and then make sure they put pictures of them putting it down. And they do it. Uh, the next spot, the next one is excavation and haul off of embankment, slides, foils. So this is calculated at a, usually about fifty percent of the estimated damage, because a lot of it's gone, it's already washed down the creek. But they might need to excavate some dirt out of there, out of certain sections, it's a lot of times, if you have a two hundred foot section, it might be gone in one spot, but it's not fully gone in other spots. So they're gonna have to excavate dirt out of there, lowest bid on that was thirty dollars a cubic yard. The highest bid was one fifty. Uh, but thirty dollars is a pretty good price just from contracts I've seen.
Can we take that material and put it back where that we need material?
Yes, as long as it is documented where it's taken, so if we wanna reuse it, everybody hauls it to the county garage. You know, we, we just have to document it where it goes, basically, and you can reuse.
Saying is if we're, I'm, I'm gonna use my district for an example, if we're in Hollybush and we have a lot of area that is eroded and we're needing fill, and then we've got another area that it is piled up. Instead of hauling it somewhere to be weighed or whatever, can we just somehow load a truck, take a picture and move that to, uh, another site?
The real answer with FEMA is no, but I, I, I can get you more guidance on that, they need to know from cradle to grave where that and it's environmental, it's the HP team, when you start going through the review, they're gonna ask everything about dirt, where it came from, where it goes.
I understand.
FEMA, with FEMA also, they want you to have a bit of upset.
Yeah.
So, uh, what, what do you guys think about this?
And then Moby, Moby is the last one.
What do you think about this press, I mean? Just say for instance, you're hauling, uh, rock from the garage, uh, forty dollars a ton. Or you're purchasing the rock and hauling it for sixty dollars a ton, and, uh, you know, might add, that is calculation of excavation, putting it back in too, right?
No, no, that's
I mean, it's, it's installation though.
Yeah, that's in, that's hauling and installing.
That's hauling and installing.
Separate money for excavating.
That's removing, that's removing material though, I'm talking about putting it back in. Hauling and installing is under the same cost.
Yeah.
So you're getting, you're talking about sixty dollars a ton to be hauled and installed. For, which, which we're, we're gonna furnish all material, so it's gonna be forty dollars a ton. Hauled from the county garage or from the strip man to the job site and installed, covering the cost of an excavator. You guys wanna kindly?
Mine's kindly blurred, I can't really tell nothing about it.
I can't either.
I'll tell you what I'll do. Did, uh, let me go if you guys got it. It's taking a second to go through. Yeah, it just came through, did you get that Avery, you or Calvin, anybody?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kinda an example of what we're
I didn't get it. Just got it.
So that's kinda an example.
I got it Judge, but it won't let me download it, I can't open it up.
He's gonna share a screen. Car, car's not low. How much is a roll of that fabric? About four hundred bucks, maybe, no. You got the ball sweet Kenny?
Yeah.
Did you get Kirby's number?
Huh?
Six eight eight two is Kirby's number, I believe.
I dialed that and it, uh,
It, it, his phone's messed up, I tried to call him earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, I know there's something wrong, I usually have it, but it, it ain't, it ain't work today, I was gonna try to
Have you got Danny's?
Daniel, oh no, I ain't got his either.
Yeah, he is, let me look it up. Four nine seven eight three seven two.
Oh, the last ones?
Eight three seven two.
Okay, thanks sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't see how they can do it any much cheaper than what, what that is because, uh, the price of the diesel fuel and everything is out right just right now. It's a bomb right back up. Where you going?
They all, uh, yeah. Are you comfortable with these presses, Justin, or what would you? I mean, I mean, if, if we need, if we need to adjust something, even, uh, if these are too high, this is too high and that's too low, we need to adjust to make sure that things are gonna be okay compatible with what FEMA is, is going to approve upon. Because we don't want them to look at that and say, why, shoot, this dang old fabric is out the roof. But up here, they're Is that, is that this amount for these five, yeah?
Yep.
What about if they're like, not some projects, it's not so close? And what's your opinion, Calvin?
I say let's roll with it and, uh, and whatever the, uh, rate is everywhere else, we just roll with it. With, uh, the, I guess you would say, just go with the supply and demand of, of everything and those, your, your rates are gonna change on the count of that too.
What about you Avery?
That sounds to me like we need to know what FEMA, you know, what their guidance is as far as financially, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And because, I mean, if we go with this and they, they deny it because they feel like it's too much, we need a better understanding of what FEMA will actually allow.
Kenny?
Yeah, I'm willing to agree on that one.
Uh, so what do you think, you, I mean, you think we? But the important thing is that FEMA's treatment is
Judges are breaking up our hearing.
Uh, well, sure, okay.
So if it's competitively procured, FEMA can't really say too much about these prices unless they're completely unreasonable. So you're fine procurement wise, um, I, I think the bigger issue is when you hand these out to the contractors, are they gonna do it for, you know, that tonnage price? I think we need to make sure they understand that it's a, it's not just the rip wrap, it's the excavation and I think we need to make sure they understand that it's a, it's not just the riprap, it's the excavation and the fabric also. Cause I mean, we might hand these out and I don't know how many of your contractors might say, no, I can't do it for that, but. And that's what, I mean, that's what Laurel's job is to make sure that the county's not taking unreasonable risk with FEMA, and she reviewed this about thirty minutes before our meeting today.
So, uh, uh, you know that? All being good?
Mm-hmm.
You're okay with that fabric cost and stuff?
Yep.
Uh, get a motion to accept the low bid.
I make a motion.
Avery makes a motion. Give us a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Got flood contractor payments. Uh, have you guys had time to look over those? The one for, uh, small town, I'll say that sixty-eight thousand of that is an emergency project that was approved for Department of Rural and Misplaced through the eighty twenty bridge program. Uh, emergency program. So we do have thirty-four thousand dollars coming back on that. We've already received the first thirty-four thousand. Uh, any questions on the, uh, invoice list? Get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Kenny makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Calvin second. It's all in favor.
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Next is the, uh, uh, revenue anticipation note, which is a CAKO loan. It's got a lot of, uh, paperwork with it. Where it is a, uh, immediate loan from CAKO. You guys looked over any of that?
I haven't received that yet.
Did you get a message, Avery, or I sent you? Bit ago.
Yeah, but I couldn't open it up. It wouldn't let me open it up.
You wanna touch on it any, Kevin?
The only thing that, uh, you know, that I would have to say about it, uh, we can pursue this if, if that's what the court wants to do. Um, I honestly, you know, I think it's for a million dollars and if the state is actually coming through with, uh, the number I've been told or heard was eight and a half million. Uh, and then we, we wouldn't necessarily need this loan. Um, you know, it, but, but a lot of it comes down to timing. You know, how long is it gonna be before we get the state money? Um, and you gotta consider too, the state money is interest free. And this is gonna have. Nah, I checked again today. It's, it's not there. Um, I, I mean, is there something that we're supposed to do perhaps? It's not done. I don't, I don't really know. But anyway, it's not there. But you know, that'd be the thing I'd say about the million dollars is, is, uh, you know, it is a loan. There will be interest charged on it. And I think that if we actually get the grant loan, whatever you want to call it, states issuing, and if it's eight and a half million dollars, we can cycle that through and should be able to make this work.
I personally don't want.
But I could be wrong too.
I personally don't want to take on a, uh, additional loan if that money is coming through. You know, in, in, in my opinion. But I do know that a cash, cash flow is, uh, gonna be tied on getting these projects. Uh,
But you don't have any idea when that, uh, state loan may come through?
Well, uh, the governor had done announced, announced that five thirty-one on that first draw. We're probably ready to do a second draw. We, but we've not received the first yet. It's, it's a little bit frustrating, you know, because, uh, you know, I know the checks and balances, finances are getting, oh, we've done everything on our end. Uh, it's proved on Frankford's end. We just have not received that, uh, funding yet.
Judge, are we saying that that's coming, uh, via electronic draft or should we be looking for a check or I, I don't, I don't really, I, I remember filling out the, uh, we filled out paperwork, gave bank account, didn't we? I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I did that.
Absolutely. We filled that out for, uh, electronic deposit.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, but that's, I've been checking. It's not there. It wasn't there as of about, uh, I was about noon when I checked today.
That's just a little concerning, huh?
Well, uh, we, we, we don't have to act on this loan right now, uh, if you wanna just put it on the back burner and wait and see.
Do you, uh, you think we should approve, Kevin, and, uh, that way if we need to proceed with it, we can. If not, then we'll just kindly, uh, uh, we don't have to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I would assume you would have to do two readings on it anyway, uh, where it's a ordinance.
Yeah.
So I don't think it would hurt anything.
Well, you, you guys all right with that? Calvin, Avery, Kenny?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're muted, Calvin.
Just do the first, uh, reading and then, uh, then just wait until we ab- absolutely have to do it, then we'll do the second reading.
Absolutely. Because I don't, I don't want to do this, you know, I don't want to borrow no money. Uh, the, the way the state fund, the state things should go fairly quickly and there shouldn't be these kinds of delays, but, uh, we'll kind of see how things go.
As long as we put the stipulations in there as it comes from the state that it is to be paid back towards that loan.
Adam, automatically. Yes, sir.
And we put the, put that some, something in the, in the writing where that it can't be, uh, us vote on this and then it be used for something else?
No, absolutely. It has to go directly back to this and that's.
I mean, I mean, are there any way that we can put that in writing?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can put that in there.
Add that to the, uh, add that to the.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Second reading of the ordinance.
That, a- a- as soon as that reimbursement funds come back through, it has to directly go back to the, uh, to that CAKO loan.
Go ahead and earmark the, uh, the funding coming from the state.
Yes. Uh, so we, uh, get a motion to, uh, approve this CAKO loan with the exception that, uh, the second reading of this ordinance will add the literature and language, the language in that, uh, as soon as reimbursement funds come through, it directly pays straight back to that loan to, uh, to abolish that. And, uh, we will only act upon this second reading as if we see an emergency situation.
I'll make a motion.
Get a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Tim?
Just one second. He's muted.
He muted, Tim. Do we have a closed session on this meeting that we can go into? It's on my agenda and I had something I wanted to address. Okay. Uh, yeah, we're going closed session. Get a motion?
I make a motion.
Give us a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?